Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, January ninth, 2024 Escondido Planning Commission to Order. You would all rise, please, for the next. Could we have the roll call, please? Chair Paul?
Yes, President.
Vice Chair Barbette? Commissioner Barbara?
Here.
Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Present.
Commissioner Mercado? Commissioner Spear?
Present.
And Commissioner Wiler?
Here.
Thank you. First item is approval of minutes from the December twelfth, 2023 meeting. Do you have any questions or a motion?
Move approval.
Second? Okay, now your voting has been opened. Should be able to refresh your screens now. And the vote is five zero to approve the minutes. Thank you. Next is written and oral communications. Is anyone here who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? And I assume you have no written communications? Correct. We have no communications. First public hearing, PL twenty-one dash zero zero fifty-seven, three thirty-five North Quinn Street, I believe is being postponed.
This item will be continued to the January twenty-third regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you very much. Next item, PL twenty-three dash zero three two four, nine sixty West El Norte Parkway, AT&amp;T Wireless Communications Facility. And the staff report is Ivan Flores.
Good evening, Chair.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Do we have any disclosures from anyone? I always forget that.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Ivan Flores, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting on PL twenty-three dash zero three zero four, which is a conditional use permit to construct a sixty-five-foot-high wireless communication facility designed as a monoglyptus. Project is located at nine sixty West El Norte Parkway. It's located with an existing commercial shopping center, which is approximately eleven-point-three-four acres in size. The subject parcel itself is developed with an existing drive-through facility. It's designed at Wendy's, with the closest residential use across El Norte Parkway and is approximately two-hundred-and-fifty feet away. The project is surrounded by primarily commercial development and residential development to the west and the Interstate fifteen to the east. The property has the general plan and land use designation of general commercial and the zoning designation of general commercial. Wireless communication facilities are allowed with conditional use permit in this zoning Here we have a preliminary site plan showing the approximate location of the monoglyptus tower. It would be located adjacent to the drive-through, which is shown here at the southeast corner of the shopping center. On the left, you see the existing conditions for the site. On the right, you see the proposed monoglyptus. As you can see, they'll be removing some shrubs. However, they'll be required to replace those in kind, in addition to an existing tree that will have to be removed. The development includes a construction of an enclosure with eight-foot CMU block walls to house a diesel generator and other associated equipment to support the monoglyptus. At its highest point, the branches would be approximately sixty-five feet in height. However, the tallest antenna would be up to sixty feet in height. Here we see elevations from the north and south. It's proposed to be designed as a monoglyptus. The applicant is required to maintain the foliage in good condition and propose non-reflective material for the structure itself. All lines would be undergrounded to the structure, so nothing will be exposed. Here you see the CMU enclosure, which houses all the accessory equipment to support the wireless facility. Here we just see the east elevation and the west elevation. The structure itself will be comprised of twelve antennas and six radio units, in addition to the support equipment on the actual structure itself. As required, the applicant did submit visual simulations of the site. So here on the left, we see the before, and on the right, we see the after with the proposed equipment area and the sixty-five-high monoglyptus tower. This project does not require the removal of any on-street parking, off-street parking. In addition to the required visual simulations, the applicant is required to submit a coverage map, which shows the existing coverage on the left. As you can see, in this general vicinity, the coverage is fair. However, with the plant site, that improves substantially with, which is shown here as the green on the right image. The project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Section fifteen-three oh three of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, and staff will file a notice of exemption with the county clerk. Based on the analysis contained in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution number twenty-two-four dash zero one approving the conditional use permit. That concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant's here.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? No. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Just a, just a quick question. I'm not aware of any, I know we've done these in the past, and there are a number of these. Have we ever had anyone that has any complaints about any of the previous antennas?
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
It's only for clarification. I see in the staff report, the height is sixty-five feet, but I'm looking at the plans that were provided in the staff report and identifies it as sixty feet. Was there a reason for the change, or was it just?
The sixty-five feet is in reference to the foliage itself, so the branches go up to sixty-five feet, and we just want to ensure that we were capturing the full height of the structure. The antennas only go up to sixty feet in height.
Got it. I understand now. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second?
I second.
The voting has been opened. You can refresh your screens, please. The voting is five zero to approve. Thank you very much. All right, next. Current business, Historic Preservation Commission. Is there a presentation on this?
No staff presentation for this item.
Okay. Since I, I'm the one who asked for the discussion, I'll begin the discussion. So Veronica, should I address questions to you?
I can answer questions the best of my ability based on historic preservation, yes.
Okay, well, let's begin at the beginning. Help us understand clearly what is the purpose of having a historical preservation committee?
With me as I find the language. One moment. So contextually, the city's general plan established a resource conservation element where historic preservation is outlined as a goal, along with policies that are identified throughout that element, which translates into implementation of that general plan through the zoning ordinance. So currently, the Historic Preservation Commission serves as an advisory body to decision-makers regarding historic preservation within the city. As you may or may not be aware, the city has one historic district that is the old Escondido neighborhood, and we have a survey of listed properties that were surveyed against historic preservation standards, with the most recent update to that survey occurring in two thousand and one.
So, one of the goals of these, of the committee is to help protect the historical architectural integrity of buildings in the neighborhoods, correct?
So the Historic Preservation Commission advises on architectural, or, excuse me, historic preservation, which has a breadth of qualifying attributes. They work to ensure that the zoning ordinance and the requirements of the historic neighborhoods or historic districts' design guidelines are reviewed in accordance with those adopted guidelines. Suffice to say, yes, your summary is correct.
Isn't it also necessary, and I don't know if this is a state requirement, but for these historical properties to be eligible for tax benefits or tax credits, don't they need to be reviewed and approved by the Historical Preservation Commission?
I can follow up with you with more direct clarification on that. However, under the city's current ordinance, that would be correct, but I would need to clarify if it's a state requirement for us to have a historic preservation commission and maintain a Mills Act program, which is what you're referring to.
Okay. Even if perhaps the state does amend, is that Escondido policy?
So currently, under the existing zoning code, Article forty for historical resources, the Historic Preservation Commission has the authority to list properties to the city's local register, which is a literal list of properties that have been found to qualify as a historic resource. And in order to obtain a Mills Act contract through the city, you would have to be on that local register. And it is City Council who authorizes Mills Act contracts.
Okay. So process is, it's an application, I presume, it goes before the commission, and then the commission passes their recommendations onto the City Council?
That is correct for Mills Act contracts, yes.
Okay, that's right. What are the qualifications to serve on the commission, if there are any specific qualifications?
Bear with me one moment. So for the HPC, it's seven individuals representing a variety of perspectives related to historic preservation, including the following: professionals in the fields of certain various studies, so this could be anthropology, American Studies, architecture, historic, actual historic preservation. A minimum of two and preferably a majority shall serve on the HPC to the extent these professionals are available. Historians, a minimum of one. Members of the historic, Escondido Historic Society, a member, a minimum of one. And then it's desirable for owners of historic structures. So again, these are the requirements of the city's current zoning code for the HPC commissioners.
Also, my understanding that there's two reasons that's kind of motivated the city to be evaluating whether to continue this commission. One is the cost to the city, is there looking for ways to kind of whittle away budget? The second reason is to expedite or make it a little more efficient for projects that are proposed in the historic district to move forward. So I have two questions about that. One is, do you know what is the cost to the city to support this commission? How much money would we be saving?
That is not something planning staff has readily available at this point in time.
About regarding efficiency, are you familiar with the Bingham Project? That went before, okay.
The name sounds familiar, but I'm not, I cannot recall the address or the scope of work.
I had heard, and I wanted to see if you could verify that. That it took an additional two years to get the project through the pipeline because they were having difficulty getting a quorum to meet with the Historical Preservation Commission? That each time it was scheduled, we heard there was no quorum, and it was persistently postponed. Could you also look into that?
I will follow up with the commission on that specific item.
So, and it's also my understanding that it's not the City Council that has requested to move this direction, that instead it's a subcommittee of the City Council that is making a recommendation that we move forward with finding an alternative to having the HPC?
So to clarify, the Planning Division is not handling the potential dissolution of the Historic Preservation Commission. The City Clerk's office is leading that effort. So I would defer to our city clerk on what the actual direction has come from, what subcommittee, from council. I was not a part of any of those conversations. My predecessor, Adam Feinstone, was present at those meetings, so you'll have to, I do have a little absence of information there, but I'm happy to follow up.
Thank you. Would you be aware, perhaps, of what the alternatives are that either the subcommittee or whatever staff that they've assigned to this is recommending?
From a perspective of the Planning Division, we would be responsible if the HPC was dissolved to amend the zoning code, so Article forty and any other relevant references to HPC. And so as a result, planning staff are analyzing and reviewing Article forty for the potential impacts that would come out of the dissolution of the HPC, but we don't have any final analysis at this point in time.
Could the process be transferred to the Planning Commission?
Theoretically, certain approving actions by the HPC, such as listing on the local register, could be delegated to the Planning Commission.
I don't have any further questions.
I have a follow-up to the Mills Act. When you were talking about that, I got the impression that there might not be any more new Mills Act items if there isn't a historic commission? Maybe I misunderstood what you said?
I apologize for the confusion, Chair Paul. I don't have the information readily available on that. I believe that if, I don't have an answer as to whether at this moment, if HP was dissolved, we could not have a Mills Act program. I will have to follow up with the commission on that.
Okay, that's what I thought you were saying, that. I would be interested in an answer to that. I mean, that would be disconcerting.
I will notify the whole commission to the answer to that question.
Does anyone else have a question?
The persons that are on the commission at this point, are they meeting all the qualifications that have been stated in the code? Or, and as a follow-up, are we having a problem getting qualified commissioners to apply and then get appointed?
So, thank you, Commissioner Wiler, to answer your first question. There are, based on a very high-level condensed set of review of the applications that came for before for these commissioners, it appears that some qualify and some do not. So there are folks from, there's, for example, a volunteer from the old Escondido Historic District. We have someone who has been on HPC for a number of years, over ten years. So there are some arguably qualified members. I unfortunately was not a part or privy to the last application and appointments of the HPC, so I'm not, I can't fully answer whether or not we had any issues getting applicants for these positions. I don't know if City Attorney's Office was present. Okay. So I'll have to do a little digging and follow up.
No, and that's okay. I was just, if, if the consideration is, it sounds to potentially dissolve HPC is, one, you know, streamlining the process, there's a problem getting a quorum, if we're just not finding qualified people to do this, I mean, yeah, those are some real issues. The cost savings, I don't know. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know where the cost savings would come into. We still have to evaluate these things from a historic preservation standpoint because of the way our code is. So I'm not sure where the, where the cost saving is, other than staff has got to prepare a staff report presented to the HPC, but that's going to be, that'll have to be done if it comes before this board as well. So all the things that have to be done, still have to be done regardless of who the approving or recommending approval to City Council, whoever that group is. The only cost savings would be staff time to come here and do the presentation to the HPC. So I'm just, these are the things that I'm kind of thinking about as to why, are, why is this being considered?
So I had thought about that. The Planning Commission gets a stipend, but does the history people get paid for attending a meeting?
No, they do not.
Yeah, so I agree with you. I don't see staff saving, when I just, staff's still going to create the report for us or for City Council.
And I've only had, you know, one, I think only one, one project that had to go to HPC, and I don't know, my experience in the one, it came well before the project was even ready to go to Planning Commission for approval, and, and we never experienced any, any real delays. If there was a delay, it could have been a month, maybe, but we may have been the ones requesting it, because some other things had to fall in place. So that's been my experience, but, you know, that's one project. If there's other projects that are experiencing significant delays, well, that's an issue. Somehow we, the city, staff, whomever, we've got to figure out a way to kind of resolve those, those delays if the HPC is creating those delays.
Well, I had only heard of the one example that I presented. Veronica, is there a way for staff to investigate whether there's other projects that have suffered delays due to scheduling with the HPC?
We can take a qualitative look at whether that's happened based on past experience by current planners present, and staff will also work with the Clerk's office to get some of these questions answered, for which I was not present for, and make sure those are communicated out to the commission in full, and give you better direction on where this actual direction has come from. Simply because of the staff turnover, I apologize, I don't have those answers at the moment.
So I'd be very curious to what the thought process is with staff or the City Clerk's office, what kind of recommendations they're planning at this stage to make the City Council. One reason I wanted this brought to the Planning Commission, I'm hoping that we, as a whole body, can make a recommendation after we hear all of the information, whether or not we will support retaining the HPC as it exists, whether we might support whatever recommendations they're making, or as I suggested, maybe we would want to recommend it be transferred to the Planning Commission.
Procedurally, if the, if staff receives a full direction from the City Council to dissolve HPC, because I do believe that it came out of a subcommittee, I just do not have the detailed information of what subcommittee, when, and, you know, what the actual language was that came out of that. If council directs staff, planning will be tasked with amending Article forty to correct references to HPC and delegate those tasks based on council's direction, that theoretical amendment will come before the Planning Commission for their recommendation to City Council. So that is an avenue, an opportunity for the commission to express their support or not of the recommendations to the zoning code. City staff can also bring a current business item prior to that amendment, if it is directed to staff, to obtain recommendations from the commission on how those items should be delegated if council defers that to the commission.
That would be after direction from the council, however, and what you're, I think, referring to is preempting that with a recommendation, but I think what you're referring to is, we don't have any standing to really submit a recommendation without being prompted by something. Is that what you're suggesting?
So.
Do you have an answer? I mean, one avenue you always have is to simply submit as if it's a comment. That might be one way to, if the commission wanted to discuss this and look at something and present a comment that Veronica, if you know of something, I don't believe there's really an avenue otherwise.
Right. But I wanted to say, you don't know the schedule for when it's going to City Council?
I don't know if it has been agendized yet for council to provide direction to staff. I think if it is, it's going to be relatively soon.
I was going to say, I think it was in the, like, the last page of the agenda that says upcoming stuff and, and scheduled for a couple of weeks from now, if I remember correctly.
I will confirm with the Clerk's office and get you all a date if it has been set.
So, so if you want to make a recommendation, we might have to do that tonight. I mean, we don't, I don't think, I don't know that we'll have time. Well, maybe for Veronica to get the answers, then we would have to have it back on our next agenda. And I'm not sure if that will be before their meeting or not.
I don't feel I have enough information to make a recommendation.
So is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this subject? All right, seeing them.
If I may, I am going to just read back the questions I am going to provide answers to the commission on, and if anyone has any additional questions they would like me to find the answer to, I would appreciate you providing that. So planning staff will confirm the duration of the Bingham Project and the potential delay that was caused, if any, by HPC review, or, excuse me, HPC quorum. City, uh, planning staff will find more information regarding which subcommittee provided the direction and what that direction was, along with dates. We will answer whether the Mills Act program would continue without an HPC, or if it could continue without an HPC, excuse me. And I also provide a date to the commission on whether that direction has been scheduled for council. So I will follow up with the Clerk's office on, on the appropriate ones. Are there any additional questions I missed or you would like to add?
Would we be able to find out what potential recommendations are going to be presented to the City Council by, by the subcommittee? I've heard they're considering splitting up the duties partly to Planning Department and partly to, what, City Council, acting without any of the other three. Have you heard anything relative to that?
So planning staff is analyzing the current Article forty for what the duties are under HPC, how they are currently delegated, researching state requirements for certain avenues of historic preservation. So I'm not an expert on historic preservation. From what I understand, that when you have an HPC, along with certain additional attributes like a survey, you may qualify for certain grant opportunities, or you may obtain a certain designation for your city's jurisdiction, we're, we're looking into what potentially would be lost as a result of HPC being dissolved, but we're still in that analysis. We don't have any determinations or findings as of yet.
Right.
Would you also be able to find out what potential savings would actually occur?
So David, when you say what the subcommittee was, is proposing, you know, they're proposing to do away with it, and then staff would come back with a recommendation on how to do away with it and what would replace it and what the possibilities are, but you won't get that information until it's agendized and the staff, the staff report comes out three, three days before the meeting.
Okay. This is, that's my first question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think it was, but that's.
Oh. I was trying to compliment you.
Okay. I don't really have questions, but I guess I have an opinion that I- Um, I, I don't really have questions, but I, I guess I have an opinion that I'd like to voice. So I, in the past, in the history of the Historic Preservation Commission, I don't know that they've always been, well, their opinions have always been well-regarded or well-respected. Um, and my, whether I was the, the chair of this commission or just a mem, a regular member, I always tried to support the historic commission as much, as much as I could and make sure that their recommendation was, was heard and was, and was considered, because I think, I think that they provide a vital service to the city. You know, they, they, for the most part, are technically qualified people with a lot of background. Um, it might not be a, a degree in historic preservation, but, you know, they've done construction and, 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 and other, and other pieces of it, and they, they, they live it. Like, if Carrie was here, I think she would be saying that. So I, I think if we got rid of it, it would be a, a big loss to the city, and so we, I think we do have to weigh that benefit against, against that loss. Uh, anybody else?
Well, um, Chair, that was kind of why I was inquiring about the people that are, have been and are on the, on the commission, because, uh, I agree with you. I, I think that if we've got good, qualified persons that are reviewing these things and have that expertise, um, you know, construction, they live in that neighborhood, all of the requirements that, um, that should warrant their appointment, then yeah, then I think they serve a value, very valuable asset to the city and, and as those things come recommended us, then we can push them on to city council. If we're failing, or not we, if, if, if the commission is not finding the qualified persons and there's some sort of dereliction of, of that commission, then I have grave concerns of the validity and of keeping such a commission. So therein lies my concern. My greatest concern is, do we have the right people that are continuously serving on that commission that provide what I think we would expect as far as expertise in historic preservation?
Yeah, so, you know, I've heard from some people who, who resigned from the commission because their opinions weren't, weren't being taken as seriously as they thought, and, and that could be why people with qualifications don't apply. They don't feel their being respected, their opinions being respected.
Well, Veronica, when you return to us, could you bring us a list of those who are serving on the commission and what their backgrounds are?
So I do have that list. I'm happy to send that out via email, if that's better.
That's fine. Okay. Anyone else?
I would like to interject because I do keep a computer at my side in events such as these, and there is government code, specifically Article 12, sections 50280 through 50290, which, just so you can believe me, you know, um, that not having a historic preservation commission does not inhibit a jurisdiction from maintaining a Mills, a successful Mills Act program.
All right. Um, next item, future agenda items. Anything a commissioner would like to put on a future meeting? And I, and I guess that, does somebody want to talk about the historic commission again at a future meeting?
Yes, I have to.
For the easy answer, you know?
I asked if she could return, if Veronica could return with the additional information. Do I have to make that more official?
I, I, maybe. Can, can we put it on the next agenda at the end of the month? Will you have time, will you have time to do that for the next?
So I believe there needs to be a motion and a second to add it, but there should be time if you would like to schedule it for January 23rd.
May I make such a motion? I would second that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Veronica. Any other future agenda items?
Were we going to be discussing the mall, the future of the mall, at any?
So I do have an update for that, which I was going to speak about at the next, or in the next item, the TFA. All right?
Um, oral communications, anything on, not on the agenda? Planning commissioners' report? Nothing. City planners' report?
We will have a January 23rd scheduled Planning Commission meeting due to the continuation of the North County Transit District. However, aside from that and the HPC item, there probably will be no additional public hearing items due to, um, the notice period lapsing. So it will be the single item plus the HPC discussion.
And, and were you then going to mention the mall? The next?
The tentative future agenda is technically next after city planners' report, correct?
No.
No? It's just city planners' report? Okay. Still, still getting my bearings, y'all.
Oh, I'm sorry. City planners' report, tentative future agenda.
It, I, I get confused with it, so. Um, yes, so I have spoken with our Economic Development Director, Jennifer Schennick. She has agreed to provide, um, an informational presentation to the commission on the current lease structure and, um, kind of all the players involved and what that looks like from the perspective of businesses and property, or, excuse me, leaseholders at the mall. Planning staff will also provide information on permit history at that same informational meeting. However, due to just current workloads and capacity, she anticipates that meeting in April, being scheduled March or April.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.